Pretty cool, like that.
All right. All right, very good, thank you. We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for December 14th, 2023. If everybody will join us, Commissioner Walker will give us the invocation and Commissioner Ramek will give us the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we seek your blessings to foster an atmosphere of respect, understanding, and cooperation. Grant us the ability to listen attentively, to speak with clarity, and to understand diverse viewpoints. May your presence be felt throughout this meeting, guide our thoughts, words, and actions. We trust in your wisdom and embrace your journey ahead, knowing that with your blessings, we could achieve great things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Director Solomon, will you please announce tonight's meeting procedures?
Yes, thank you. When your name is called, please come to the podium. Address your comments to Planning Commission and not to the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone who has signed up has spoken. And a reminder to Planning Commissioners and to anyone else who may speak, please be clearly into the microphone so that everyone can hear. This meeting is recorded and whoever is doing the minutes will bless you for speaking clearly. We understand that you may have strong feelings one way or another out of courtesy unless it is your turn to speak. Please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. This is a fact-finding hearing. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. If a previous speaker states points that you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so that the hearing may proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes and we ask that you please observe the time limit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stotter, will you please call the roll?
Ramek.
Here.
Sharma.
Present.
Erickson.
Present.
Stafford. Scott. Gurkey.
Present.
Lamond. Davis.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Val.
Present.
Harvey.
Present, thank you so very much. May I have a motion and a second for the approval of last month's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Approval... Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda, thank you. Items number six and seven have been deferred by the applicant. May I have a motion and a second for the approval of tonight's amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so very much. The first matter of tonight's business is the consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, don't we approve... Oh, do we do that after?
Usually you present the items on the consent agenda. The agenda's been approved as amended.
Yes. Is the vote prior or after?
I think after.
Okay. All right, so we'll call for a vote again after. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Six and seven?
Six and seven are gone.
Yeah, we're just...
They're gone.
So at this point, Director Solomon, will you please can...
Yes, ma'am. I certainly will, thank you. Item number one is miscellaneous 23-189 located at 155 Carpenter Dam Road. This is a miscellaneous application for monument sign height variance in the Malvern Avenue overlay. The recommendation is for approval with two conditions. I'll read the conditions into the record. The conditions are the sign cannot be located within the area for clear visibility at the intersection for Hot Springs Code Section 162109 and number two, the sign must be located at least 10 feet from the water line. Item number two is SPA 23-187 located at 101 College Drive. This is a large-scale development site plan review application for the construction of new student housing on the National Park College campus. Recommendation is for approval with four conditions. I'll read those conditions into the record. Number one, the development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site plan and development plan, including but not limited to location of building, drives, parking, and landscaping. Number two, all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, Garland County, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number three, the utilities department requires that the water meter must be at the property line at the street at Mid-America Boulevard. And B, the two-inch domestic water service line should tee off the six-inch water main before that six-inch main continues to the building as a fire protection main. And number four, all approvals and permits shall be in hand from Garland County Stormwater and Floodplain before construction begins. That concludes the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Director Solomon, at this time. Mr. Stotter, will you please take the roll on the approval of tonight's consent agenda?
Sharma.
Approve.
Erickson.
Approve.
Gurkey.
Approve.
Davis.
Approved.
Walker.
Approved.
Val.
Approved.
Ramek.
Approved.
Harvey.
Approved, thank you very much. It's on our agenda, but it's not in this packet. Just one second, folks, please.
Okay, it's the next item in the board.
So four is going first.
Number four is 117 Alpine Street.
Yep.
And that is in the packet following.
Okay. So as we go through the screens, Rick and Ms. Dawn, if you guys will just keep up with this. We have number four, I think, in front of number three. But we're still going to go in the order of what is on the agenda.
Okay, so we're... So is Alpine number three on the agenda that you have, or is Beard?
Beard.
Okay.
So...
Do we need to amend that in our presentation?
It shows as three. 422 Beard shows as three, but it is listed after four. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Let's go with the item that is numbered on the agenda as number three.
Which is 422 Beard?
Which is 422 Beard.
Okay, so the the next item on the agenda is new business, the next matter. Director Solomon, will you please introduce item number three?
Thank you. Item number three is planned development 23-174 located at 422 Beard Street. This is a planned development zoning and site plan application to create two small residential lots at 422 Beard Street.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion in a second does not necessarily mean that you're in favor of this application. May I have a motion in a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Director Solomon, will you please present the staff report on item number three?
Yes, thank you. The applicant and property owner is Mr. Lance Levy of RRL LLC. He is requesting planned development zoning and site plan approval to create two reduced-size lots for single-family residential development. The subject property consists of approximately .14 acres and is currently zoned R4 medium-high-density residential. This property also has a future land use map designation of residential medium-high. It is in Board of Directors District Number Three. The proposed development would occupy the entire site at 422 Beard and would contain two 465-square-foot, one-bedroom, one-bath homes on each of the 0.7-acre lots. The site is bordered on all sides by properties zoned R4 medium-high-density residential. To the west is Beard Street and to the north is Garland Avenue. Surrounding land uses are single-family residential. The site plan depicts the overall layout, size, and configuration of the proposed 0.07-acre lots and 465-square-foot residential building development. Garland Avenue will provide ingress and egress. There is an existing pedestrian sidewalk along the front of the development. The project proposes both city water and city sewer services, which are readily available and have the capacity to serve the project. The code requires that PD zone districts be of a character and contain such uses that are needed in the area of the proposed project. The proposal meets the goals of the Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan. Neighborhood goal number three, enhance the desirability of in-town neighborhood living. And number four, accelerate home building in near-town and in-town neighborhoods. The requested zone change from R4 medium-high-density residential to PD planned development for the proposed Beard Street lots on the subject property meets the standards for favorable consideration according to Hot Springs Code Section 16247E and with conditions, all individual elements comply. Recommendation is regarding the zone change to recommend the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map designating the subject property residential PD planned development because Planning Commission has made a specific finding that the requested change meets the standards required by Hot Springs Code Section 16247E. The change helps to implement an approved city plan and the 2023 housing strategy and is compatible with surrounding development and zoning. Regarding the site plan, the finding is that the site plan and other materials with it with the conditions will comply with the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16247 and other Hot Springs codes applicable to this review, again, subject to compliance with conditions of approval. And regarding the site plan, recommendation is that you approve the PD zoning and site plan for 422 Beard Street planned development on approximately .14 acre, subject to the conditions because when these conditions are applied, the application complies with the requirements of Hot Springs Code. Number one, all construction and construction activity is to be accomplished in strict accordance with the development plan and all approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, regulations, and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, the development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved planned development site plan, including but not limited to setbacks which are 20 feet in the front, 25 exterior sides, 8.75 feet in the interior sides, and 12.4 feet on the rear. Also to the use of street construction sidewalks, detention areas, green or open spaces, parking, landscaping, and utilities. Number three, separate permit applications shall be made by the applicant to Hot Springs Engineering Department and permits shall be in hand for stormwater drainage and sidewalks as may be required prior to any work beginning. And number four, the planning director shall be authorized to sign the plat listing these conditions of approval and the development plan and work shall not proceed until the lot-split subdivision plat has been so executed. Number five, contingent upon Board of Directors approval of an ordinance approving planned development zoning, approval of this development plan is valid until December 14th, 2024. And prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension of up to one year. Number six, no permits will be issued and the sale of lots shall not occur until a lot-split subdivision plat, meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16445, has been approved, signed by the planning director, and filed for record with Garland County Circuit Clerk and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the Planning Department office. Number seven, an approved use... The approved use shall be residential with customary and usual accessory uses. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much, Director Solomon. At this time, may the applicant come forward, give your name, your address for the record, and please let us know if there's anything else you would like to add. You have five minutes.
My name's Lance Levy. Address is 212 Sunset Bay Road, Hot Springs. I think that Director Solomon said it all. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I mean, it's affordable housing. We're building all brick homes. Even as rent houses, I've built three. Two bedrooms and one one-bedroom in the city in the last two years, all brick houses, and that's what I tend to build here. Just to try to provide the need that the city needs here.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Director? No questions? Thank you very much. At this time, do we have anybody signed up? Thank you very much. At this time, the public portion of this application is closed. Commissioners, at this time, is there anything that you would like to discuss amongst ourselves? Any questions?
No, I have no answer, any questions or comments?
Okay, so at this time, I have a motion to approve with staff findings and recommendations on item number three. Mr. Stotter, with you, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Approve.
Gurkey.
Approve.
Davis.
Approved.
Walker.
Approved.
Val.
Approved.
Ramek.
Approved.
Sharma.
Approve.
Harvey.
Approved, thank you very much.
May I make an announcement?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Levy, the Board of Directors will consider approval of your project on January 19th at 6:00 in the hearing room here. We'll see you then.
Thank you, Director Solomon. Will you please introduce the next item?
Yes. The next item is Alpine Street?
Yes, item number four.
That is a rezon request, RZ 23-186, at approximately 117 Alpine Street. It's a request to change zoning from R3 to CTR for property at that location.
Thank you very much. A motion to approve merely gets this matter on the floor for discussion. A motion in second does not necessarily mean you're in favor of this application. May I have a motion in second to approve item number four?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Director Solomon, please present the staff report on item number four.
Thank you. Applicant Danny Blair, representing property owner Roadside Properties LLC, seeks CTR commercial transitional zoning for approximately .172 acres of land located at approximately 117 Alpine Street. Subject property is currently zoned R3 low-medium-density residential, has a future land use plan classification of residential medium-high, and is located in District Four. Okay, the Hot Springs Code requires that if the proposed zoning amendment is not consistent with the future land use plan, that Planning Commission shall first consider and adopt any necessary changes to the future land use plan. Regarding that, the future land use map designation of commercial enclave would give the subject property a consistent future land use classification and would be consistent with the majority of the surrounding CTR-zoned properties. And the recommendation is for Planning Commission to recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the future land use plan map designating the subject property as commercial enclave. With regard to the zone change, the applicant has successfully demonstrated that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommendation to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. With a future land use plan map amendment to Neighborhood Commercial Center, the subject property would have... Should this...
Yeah, it should be commercial.
Commercial enclave, yes. Okay, we would like to have you consider amending the future land use plan map to Neighborhood... to commercial enclave, which would give the subject a consistent land use designation with those other CTR properties in the area around it. The recommendation regarding the zone change itself is that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property CTR commercial transitional because Planning Commission can make a specific finding that the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and that the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code as required by Hot Springs Code Section 16211E.
Thank you very much, Director Solomon. At this time, may the applicant come forward? At this time, may the applicant come forward, give your name, your address, and please add anything to the record that has not been said, and you have five minutes.
My name's Danny Blair. Address is 119 Alpine, Hot Springs, Arkansas 71913. My narrative kind of sums it up. I paid $50,000 for this lot, and I've put a lot of money into that block from Hickam Ferry to Bell, and done some really nice improvements. Two of those homes are short-term rentals, and then, of course, 119, which is right next to 117, is my real estate brokerage. So, you know, and learning that the property was zoned differently than the bank appraised it for was kind of disheartening, but following these channels, I hope that we can, you know, it gets approved, and if there's anything else that you guys would like to ask, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you very much. At this time, do we have anybody signed up to speak? Thank you, thank you very much. At this time, the public portion of this, if this application is now closed, Commissioners, at this time, do we have anything that we'd like to discuss amongst ourselves? Thank you very much. So may I have a motion and approval with the staff findings with the amendment to the commercial enclave and recommendations? So at this time, Mr. Stoddard, will you please call the roll?
Gurke.
Approve.
Davis.
Approve.
Walker.
Approve.
Bowe.
Approve.
Sharma.
Approve.
Erickson.
Approve.
Ramick.
Approve.
Hobbie.
Approve. Thank you very much.
Okay. That, that item has been, has a recommendation now from Planning Commission for approval. Board of Directors will make the final decision on January 19th at 6:00 in these board chambers, and you would need to be present for that. Okay.
At this time, Director Selman, will you please introduce the next item, item number five?
Thank you. Is that the date, the 19th?
Ma'am?
So that would be the third. I have the first being the first Tuesday and the ninth being the second Tuesday.
So the, there's only one meeting in, so it'd be the 16th?
January 5th is the first Tuesday, January 19th is the, oh, wait a minute. In January, you're talking, right?
Yeah. There's only one meeting in January?
Yeah, it'd be the 16th.
16th.
First Tuesday is the second, second is the 16th.
Okay. Well, we can confirm that with our applicants.
We'll make sure to get in contact with those.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Our final item is item number five. This is a rezon request, number 23-190, at 1103 Hickam Ferry Road, and this request is to change the zoning from R3 to C3 at 1103 Hickam Ferry Road.
Thank you very much. A motion merely gets this matter on the floor for a discussion. A motion and a second does not mean that you're necessarily in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve item number five?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Director Selman, please present the staff report on item number five.
Thank you. Applicant is Mr. Jonathan J. Martin, P.A., representing property owners K. Marie Bowles Hearn and Nathaniel Lee Hearn. They are requesting C3 office neighborhood commercial district zoning for approximately .51 acres of land located at 1103 Hickam Ferry Road. Subject property is currently zoned R3, low-medium density residential, and has a future land use classification of residential medium high and is located in Board of Directors, District Number Three. Currently, there is a 1,772 square feet, single-family residential home, which was constructed in approximately 1958. The property has 133 feet of street frontage on Hickam Ferry Road. This portion of Hickam Ferry Road has been widened to a five-lane configuration since the time that that home was constructed, and this has commercial sidewalks and bike lanes on each side of the road. The C3 district allows limited commercial along with office development in proximity to residential areas. Further, the district exists to promote mixed-use developments that increase the use of non-vehicular traffic. C3 districts also serve as proper buffers between low-density residential and higher-intensity commercial uses. Building masses should be modest and in scale with residential developments. Nearby land uses are office, single-family residential, funeral home, convenience store with pumps, hospital, shopping center, hotel, and vacant land. The applicant intends an adaptive reuse of office on the property. The application narrative asserts that this request meets required findings for compatibility with surrounding zoning and development, responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other conditions, and fulfills a public need for land so zoned. If rezoned to C3 office neighborhood commercial district, this property would be afforded the complete list of permitted and conditional uses as detailed in Hot Springs Code Section 16 to 152 Table of Permitted Uses. That was from the applicant's narrative and addresses those mandatory findings, which we must use in evaluating a zone change request. The zone change request demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development or zoning. Properties located immediately to the south are currently zoned C3 and contain an office use and a recently constructed convenience store with gas pumps. The other surrounding uses have already been listed. The zone change request responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, and other conditions in the construction of the convenience store with pumps, and also the expansion of Hickam Ferry Road to five-lane sidewalk and bike lanes. The Hickam Ferry Road at this time appears to be well-positioned to facilitate development or redevelopment along this important city corridor. Many visitors and residents alike are using Hickam Ferry Road as an alternative to the heavily-traveled Central Avenue to gain access to the South Hot Springs area, which provides shopping, dining, medical, and recreational opportunities, including Lake Hamilton. The widening project of Hickam Ferry Road is considered a significant change in surrounding physical conditions. A future land use map designation of linear commercial corridor would be consistent with other nearby C3 zoned properties along this major thoroughfare. The applicant has successfully demonstrated that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other conditions. Recommendation to Planning Commission is that you recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property C3 office neighborhood commercial district, because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other conditions, and also to recommend in that ordinance that we amend the future land use plan map by designating the subject property linear commercial corridor consistent with nearby C3 zoned properties, future land use plan map designations. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Director Selman. At this time, will the applicant please come forward, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to add anything to the record that has not been presented.
Thank you. Jonathan Martin, 1401 Malvern Avenue, here in Hot Springs. I have a confession. I'm both the attorney for the applicant and I also have vested interest in this application because we have the property under contract as well. So this development would actually be for my office if this is approved for the zoning re-change. Pardon me. We feel that the, the C3 zoning is, is the appropriate change in this case. The neighboring property directly to the south, which shares a property line with the subject property, is also C3. There's no plan at all to, we're going to utilize the existing structure, so there's not going to be any expansion of the, the property as far as the, the physical structure of the building itself, and this would be a fantastic use for, for us, and we feel like a fantastic addition to, to Hickam to continue that commercial development in a tasteful way. The, a couple of things I'd just like to point out very briefly. This little section of, of R3 there off Hickam, there are eight properties in that future land use map that are in, in that residential zone. Two of those eight are already zoned commercial. One is C3, one is CTR, and then a third, which is, was, is neighboring, that's, or excuse me, it's not neighboring, it's in that same future land use, is owned by the hospital group. So three of the eight are already contemplated, most likely with a commercial use, so we would be adding to that. So we feel like it's time to, to make the shift for this section to amend the future land use for the linear commercial, and I appreciate your consideration. I'd be glad to answer, answer any questions you have, and I, I thank you.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Sir, what is directly north of, of this property?
Directly north is a vacant lot that goes all the way up to, I believe it's Wright's Avenue.
Yep.
That's been held by the same owners for, for many years. My understanding is that they are holding that ultimately for commercial development. Now, I can't speak on behalf of those owners, but that's what I, what my understanding is.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I would like to mention that that owner did call the office and was in favor of the rezon.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody signed up for this? Okay. Thank you. And we will call those that have signed up in order of how they signed up, and you will have three minutes for your presentation. First, we have Jim McAdams.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to speak. Mr. Martin said that, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Rachel Mundee.
Yeah, I'm also waiting. I'm just here as a representative of the seller of the property here.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. At this time, the portion, the public portion of this application is now closed. Commissioners, any thoughts, concerns, questions that we'd like to talk amongst ourselves about?
Let's vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve with staff report findings and recommendations? Mr. Stoddard, will you please call the roll?
Davis.
Approve.
Walker.
Approve.
Bowe.
Approve.
Ramick.
Approve.
Sharma.
Approve.
Erickson.
Approve.
Gurke.
Approve.
Hobbie.
Approve. Thank you so very much.
Okay. And with that recommendation for approval, the final decision will be made by the Board of Directors. We now know that's January 16th and not the 19th, which I have to confess is my sister's birthday. I don't think she's going to be expecting those people, so we're gonna, gonna straighten that out. So we look forward to seeing you at the board meeting on the 16th at 6:00.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the Director's Report.
Thank you. Let's see. I can tell you that we are waiting anxiously for the next draft of our new code, which we're expecting to have around the first of January, and very much looking forward to that. Our consultant group is right on time, and so we're moving forward with that, and you will be seeing, I believe, probably be several weeks before you see that draft, but it will be coming to you. We wanted to talk about one quick training item, and that is on the one-pager here. It's something that is troublesome to every, every board everywhere, and, and the staff for every board everywhere. So I wanted to do a reminder on what we do if the staff findings in the staff report differ from what you think is the right vote. The findings in the staff report will either support approval, and most of the time that's the case, or they will support a vote to not approve. Now, if the motion has been made, and it's always in the positive, to approve, but after you've heard everything, read everything, you say, no, can't do it, and here's why, you will vote no with this, well, you will vote, all right, say it's not approved, you want to approve it, because it means, this is how confusing it is. You want to vote yes, but the findings support no. Your vote is yes because, and then you will provide a code-based reason for why you are voting the way you are voting.
Okay. But voting yes approves is correct?
Voting yes.
With staff findings because?
If staff findings is no.
If the staff findings are no.
And you say yes, you're supporting the staff.
Because it's always in the affirmative.
This is what this says.
Yeah. Usually, the motion to get it to the floor is to, is to approve.
Right.
It doesn't really say with staff findings and recommendations at that time. So, so the motion to get it to the floor is in the affirmative, as Brian would say.
Yes.
So, so everything is for approval. Now, when it comes to time to vote, it, it's a lot easier for someone that's opposed to something to say no, you know, because you want to say, say no. So I, I believe if a motion's brought to the floor in the affirmative to approve, but you don't say with staff findings and recommendations, you're just making a motion to approve, then if you want to vote against that at time of voting, you say, you say no.
Okay. So a yes is agreeing with staff findings, is that correct?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily in how they're presenting this particular item. For me, and maybe when we, when we go to, and, and I've been, I've been reprimanded on this. When I go, do I have a motion with staff report and findings and recommendations? Okay. So I am asking, do you agree with what their recommendations are that are presented to us, whether it be yes or no?
But, but, and that is correct, as far as that goes. But when there is not adequate support in the staff report for a yes vote, what your script will say is motion to approve.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
It will say motion to approve. It always says with staff findings and, and findings and recommendations.
If, if the findings and recommendation are to deny it, your script will, should say just approve, not with findings and recommendations.
Well, it depends on what is recommended.
It does depend on what is recommended.
So if it is recommended by the Planning Commission that it is to not be approved, I, as chairman, would still say I have a motion to approve with staff findings and recommendations, which is sometimes a no, and that's where a lot of people do get confused.
I know, I do.
So...
Well, I always thought with no, if you voted no, then you had to give the reason why you're voting no.
Yes, you do.
Yeah. And I think that's what, that's our biggest mishap, is that, that's the part where we get laxadaisy, or we say something like it doesn't fit with neighboring surround, no, we need to know the codes.
Yeah, we have to have the codes. Has to follow the code.
Right. And with a motion, if you have a staff report... And with a motion, if you have a staff report, like the staff reports tonight, those people came in, we held their feet to the fire, they came in with applications that addressed the code requirements, and they all met those requirements, which is great, but they don't always. In, in this case, when you say, I need a motion for approval with staff report findings and recommendations, that's fairly clear.
Correct, because then when it comes time to vote, if you agree with what staff said, then you just vote yes, and if you don't, you say no and you state why.
Yep.
But Scott, you have to cite the code, is that correct?
Right, but to Carrie's point, when you're saying, when her motion says with staff report findings and recommendations, that's the addressing of the code. If you disagree with what the finding was, and you may have, you may have tremendous reason to, somebody may come up and say, you know, that, that land is totally underwater, seven months out of the year. So, no, you shouldn't, we shouldn't approve a conditional use for assisted living there. Then, you know, that's, that's a good reason to change it. It's, it doesn't meet the requirements anymore. It's not safe. But if, if the recommendation, Rick, I need you to explain this because you explain it better than I do.
This is the way I, correct me if you think I'm wrong.
This is why we're talking about it.
If staff is recommending approval of an item, I think when it comes to the floor, it should be a motion to approve with staff finding and recommendation. And that way, when it comes to vote, if you're for the item, you say yes. If you're not for the item, you say no, but you give a reason why.
From the code.
Now, if we're recommending denial of something, I think it should come to the floor with just an approval recommendation.
Right.
But it doesn't say with staff findings and all that. It's in the affirmative, as Brian would say. So, it's, I just want a motion to approve, to get it to the floor, and then at the time of voting, you can say no to that item. Staff is recommending denial of it, you can say no when it's your turn to vote. If you wanted to say yes at that point, I guess you would need to state a finding as to why you felt like you, you know, felt differently than what staff did. So, I do think that helps clear it up. If you're, if we're recommending a staff approving an item, getting it to the floor with staff findings and recommendation is the right approach. If we're recommending denial, then just a motion to approve.
Okay, so if you're recommending denial?
Right.
That is in the affirmative. So, we, if we agree with the denial, we will vote yes.
Yes.
No.
No. That's where it's confusing.
No, if, if, if it says that, that you are recommending that it be denied...
But on a recommendation for denial, we are going to ask that the chair say motion to approve, period, not with recommendation and deny, and, and findings.
Okay.
And that, at that point, it is up to each commissioner either to say no with the findings of the staff report, or yes because it meets the standards of blah, blah, blah.
Correct.
I mean, that, that makes more, that makes more sense to me.
Okay.
So, when you say no with the staff findings, you do not have to give a code because you're agreeing with the real people?
And the findings are based on the code?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yep, we, we can't sit there and say, I never liked this guy. I don't like houses that look like that, so I'm recommending denial. Our, our recommendation to you must be based in code requirements.
Got it. I mean, that, I mean, that, that cleared it up for me.
I'm gonna file this away, my little brain.
We, we have discussed whether to put this as the back page of every packet so that it's always in here, you can refer to it.
Yes.
If these situations pop up.
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay? We can do that.
But at the time prior to the vote, we can ask questions about how we should vote, correct?
To accomplish what you're trying to do.
Yes.
You absolutely can do that.
When, when everybody's done speaking and the public portion is closed, then that's where we get to have these conversations.
Yep.
So, the conversation would be, I don't, I agree with staff findings, which are no, that it does not meet, so my vote would be no.
Correct.
That would be during the discussion as well.
Yep.
You can say, you know, well, the staff said they didn't find it met the code, so that's a no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, and I've seen situations where the board directors even, where they might not understand their vote, and then they have to rescind it at the end.
That's right. That's right. And if you remember from our training, if you want to change your vote, you must say, I voted wrong before the next item is called.
Yeah.
That is the only time you can do it. If Carrie starts talking about the next item, game over. So, you know, and don't be afraid to speak up if you, if you think you might have voted wrong. Say, you know, I'm, here's, you know, Madam Chairman, here's, I may have done something I didn't intend, you know, can we talk about that? And we can, we can talk about that.
We stop and, yeah.
If we need to reopen the item and revote, that can happen.
I'd suggest that you do put this last page.
Okay.
So, we'll see it every time.
Okay.
And I, and I also suggest that sometimes training, because I know we do have several new...
We do.
And even those that have been here for a while do need a repeat. Like, when we get to the open conversation, we've got to quit putting feelings and emotions into it.
Yes.
And I think that's what gets us hung up a lot.
Yeah, and sometimes we have an interest in an item that doesn't relate to the standards that we're using...
Right.
...to, to do the vote. I mean, if you're just curious about something, about the project, sometimes this isn't the place to, to delve into that.
Nothing's wrong, just like not here, like not in this forum.
And if you have a close relationship with the applicant, it's perfectly permissible to recuse yourself.
Yes. Yep. Yep. There are times when you must, there are times when you may, and, you know, if you're, if you're uncomfortable making a decision in a situation, even though you don't live within, what, 200 feet or 100 or 200, I guess, or that you don't have a direct financial interest, or a family member has a direct financial interest, if you're just not comfortable, please recuse. And, and please don't decide not to vote. You're here to vote. So, you voted up or you voted down and you say your reason, but not voting really isn't one of your options.
We had one vote present a lot of times.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Director Selman. And this, this is a good reminder, but just those extra reminders, and whether it be at staff report or director's report or agenda meetings, which some of us don't always get to make it.
Yep.
It's always helpful.
The complete code is here also. Brian always has it right here, so if you ever have any questions or...
I used to bring it with me, but it got a little heavy.
You can go online.
I got older.
Yeah, and do we have access to the code on here?
No, I don't think so, not on here.
Could we? Can you find out?
Right now?
No, just in future.
Uh, we might could get it up off Station 12, if you don't get it displayed up.
Okay, okay, that would be good.
It's on that USB drive, right?
Yes.
I mean, what, what you, you get yes. All right, do I have to find, clear out the rest of this? Okay.
All right, Madam Chairman, if you have nothing else?
No further business?
I make a motion that we...
Adjourn.
Go home.
Any second.
Second.
Boom. Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night.
Absolutely.